We call the Newport City Council meeting to order for Monday, October 17th, 2016, 6:30 PM, City Council Room. Alderman Morris said he's absent this evening. Others present include John Wilson, President of the City Council, not President, sorry, John Wilson, Member of the Council, Jack Robert's Member of the Council, and Steve Vincent, Member of the Council. And we have Stacy Tarian filling in for Jim Johnson, our Clerk-Treasurer, and we have Laura Dogen, our City Manager. The next item is to approve the minutes of October 3rd. I would entertain a motion if so choose.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the minutes of 3 October, 2016.
Seconded. Seconded. Any discussion? Now, I received a third copy.
Stacy dropped one on me. Yeah, this one here, I think, is the one she wants to sign.
Okay, because I had this one and this one I just saw.
I think that's it.
When I signed, okay. Then any other discussion, then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. No place to sign on this one. I'll just sign on the back page. They forgot it. I'll just sign right here. The next item is comments by members of the public. This gives anybody in the audience a chance to bring up any issue or comment on any non-agenda item. Seeing none, then we'll move on. Update on stony stonewort, Annie Bow, aquatic nuisance invasive species management, Vermont DEC Waterside Management Division.
Thank you, Mayor. Is it possible to turn off one bank of lights?
Sure.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much for the invitation to come and provide an update. Laura and Andy asked me to provide this. As the mayor said, I work for the Department of Environmental Conservation in the Lakes and Ponds section. I coordinate aquatic invasive species management for the state, and I've worked with invasive species and aquatic plants for the last 30 years. I hope everybody in the room has heard about this species and finding it. Just want to give everybody some background before I give you an update on what's happening in Lake Memphormagog. This is a non-native species, not native to our region. It's actually an algae, but it looks like a true aquatic plant. Algae's have very simple plant structure, a structure overall. It's native to temperate regions of Europe and Western Asia, and the Lake Memphormagog population found in 2015 was the first confirmation of this species in Vermont. We've since found one additional population, also in Orleans County unfortunately, in Lake Derby. It is in neighboring states. It's in New York, Massachusetts, Connecticut. It's been in Michigan for a while, new populations in Minnesota and Wisconsin, but it's a new species to the U.S., so a new introduction. And we're learning as fast as we can what this species is all about, its biology, how to control it, what the impacts are, but that's a learning curve. Unfortunately, a plant like this doesn't wait while you get all the information that you need, but as I said, a very simple structure, and I'm going to pass around. I collected this from Scott's Cove this afternoon, and what I want you to take a look at is in this vial also. This is where the plant gets its name, I'm going to talk about that, but this green material is the starry stonewort. Very simple structure, it can provide or grow into a thick biomass very quickly. It gets its name from that white appendage that looks like a star. It's an anchoring device, it's how it absorbs nutrients, and it's also how it spreads. So each point on the star can grow into a new plant. And that wad that I'm passing around is basically just a garden rakeful dipped into Scott's Cove, and if you look carefully, you can see a lot of those bubbles, so that's what it produces fairly quickly and how it proliferates. We do have a number of native aquatic plants that could easily be confused with the starry stonewort, members of the stonewort family, and they are in Lake Memphormagog, serve an important purpose as far as the environment goes, members of the stonewort family, and then the bushy pond weed slender niaad, members of the niaad family. So easily confused with starry stonewort unless you look at it closely.
You mentioned Lake Derby, do you mean Derby Pond?
I do, yeah. I talked about how fast it can grow, the dense mats can be pretty thick, it's not very fussy about where it grows, low nutrients, high nutrients, it'll grow in pretty deep water depths. I talked about the bubbles as a means of dispersal by pieces of the plant or branches it can disperse as well. What we understand now from this species, its ability to crowd out other aquatic plants, reducing diversity, it can interfere with fish spawning areas because of those dense mats, it'll be shallow and deep, reducing water flow, and obviously what most of us think about when we see a large wad of plants like that is how it interferes with our recreational, our use of that water body, but the environmental impacts are there as well but not well understood. So Scott's Cove was the original point of, or the original confirmation in Lake Memphormagog, and probably many of you are familiar with this semi-isolated cove. That's the opening last fall, and I actually was there this evening, and it looks pretty much about like that unless you're standing at Proudie Beach access and there's, you know, three feet of mud to access to the water, but somewhat isolated. And originally, when the population was found, we were encouraged that maybe that's where all it was in Lake Memphormagog, and maybe we had caught it early. And just to give you a confirmation of what happened, Valerie Dillon is here this evening. She actually was the person that alerted the DEC staff to this find. There was a workshop, she's a trained Vermont invasive patroller, that's a program that we operate to help us keep an eye out for invasive species. She saw something unusual in Scott's Cove and provided a sample to us. The sample didn't have mature features enough for me to make a confirmation and feel confident that what I had was starry stonewort, so we came back in late August, did find what we needed and confirmed the population, and then started the public notification piece. I don't like to alert local folks or the city until I know exactly what I have and where it is. By mid-September, we had a sense of where it was in Scott's Cove, but didn't have enough time to go look elsewhere in the lake. And as I said, we're hopeful that maybe this was the only location in Lake Memphormagog. We did do some winter sampling, and I apologize for some of these slides, they may be cut off, I'm using Google to share this presentation this evening, but we did find starry stonewort in February under the ice, green, happy, dense, growing. Unfortunately, I was hoping that there would be nothing there. Many of you probably were aware of the temporary closure that existed on Scott's Cove, starting May 23rd of 2016. Again, the state has the ability to temporary close areas for 90 days for all uses. We were thinking that Scott's Cove was the only population in the lake, and we wanted to buy ourselves more time. There really was one property owner impacted by this closure, other than folks that liked to use it, and that property owner was very accommodating for the closure. We worked with the VIP program to hold a training in this neck of the woods to raise awareness. I had a Wisconsin expert that was willing to come and provide some information, that's Paul Wiskowanski on the lower left, who was very helpful looking at the population, providing insights on management to me. In June through October, we started to look at other public access points around the lake. In June, I did find starry stonewort outside of Scott's Cove, adjacent to Proudie Beach, mostly north of Proudie Beach, a few plants, not a lot, not like Scott's Cove, and I didn't mention that, I estimate Scott's Cove to be about 24 acres in size, and the starry stonewort population takes up about 23 of those 24 acres. We also looked at other public access point, Strawberry Acres, the St. John River, the city docks, and South Bay. I partnered with the Memphormagog group in Quebec, and we looked at 15 to 16 public access points in Quebec as well. We did not find it in Quebec, in the Quebec portion of the lake at all, who knows why?
I think I do. They mandatory, they require a mandatory washing of every boat.
They do, and that may contribute, although knowing that it's in a portion of Memphormagog, there could be in lakes spread.
Right, right.
But that program is an important program for preventing aquatic invasive species spread. I mentioned Scott's Cove, I mentioned out the mouth of it, and then South Bay, we did also find a significant population as well. And I thought I had a slide, I'm going to jump to this one. So we, through about five, five days, we sampled 287 points in South Bay. South Bay is roughly 470 acres, so these points are 100 meters apart, but it's the most efficient way to get a picture of what's happening underneath the water. It's a little hard to see, but red, orange, and yellow dots are indicative of densities of starry stonewort. So in those 287 sample points, roughly 50 of them had starry stonewort, at the Fish and Wildlife Access, mostly along the west side and down, and a few on the east side as well, and then down towards the southern end. So the map to the left would jump to the top of the two on the right. I haven't estimated the acreage yet, but it's been there for some time. Which came first, Scott's Cove or South Bay? We'll never know. It's just one of those things, we don't know. Some additional sites that were looked at, the Lake Derby population, which I haven't given you much information on yet, was found by a researcher with the New York Botanical Gardens, someone that I've tapped into for information. He's very interested in this species and is looking at the genetics of it to determine where populations in North America tie to in Europe and Asia. So he actually did a lot of sampling this September in Orleans County, looking at 20 lakes, and in addition to Memphormagog, he found the Derby Lake Derby Pond population and alerted me, but what's at least a little comforting for this point in time, if you look at the black dots, those are other lakes that he looked at and didn't find starry stonewort. This is a moving picture, who knows what things will be like next year, but it's comforting to know at least this point that the population is somewhat limited. Bear with me, my slides are a little jumbled, but to give you a sense of the Lake Derby population, the town has been alerted and neighboring towns, and I haven't shared this map yet, I just created it this morning, but if you look at the red and yellow dots and the blue area that I'm estimating, that's the zone of starry stonewort. And again, that yellow triangle at the top, that's where it was found, that's the Fish and Wildlife Access. What I haven't talked about is, I talked about dispersal, but we really believe the species is moving around in mud, trapped on anchors or in other equipment because of that bubble. It could easily be in the mud, and that's the most likely way of it moving, although fragments and pieces caught on boating equipment certainly is a means as well, but a lot of people understand that invasive species can be spread that way and are conscious of removing weeds, visible weeds from their equipment, are less conscious about mud on anchors. So it's not surprising to find these populations at public access points. So now I'm going to jump back here to management options for this species, and unfortunately, they're limiting. There's really two methods being used for this species elsewhere, mostly in Michigan, Wisconsin, and Minnesota, and both with varying results. Diver-operated suction harvesting, think of a vacuum cleaner where you've got the nozzle and you're digging up plants underwater, you're putting that nozzle on those plants and sucking them to the surface. Very labor-intensive, not meant for large populations. One acre, two acres, 24 acres, 100 acres, no. Also, because of those bubbles or in the sediment, this is an ongoing process to eliminate a population. Chemicals are being used, but effectiveness are very limited, and it's a mixture of products that are being used, they're trying to figure out what's going to target this species. I will say in Vermont that we have a very strict law about pesticide use in our waters. One of the findings that has to be, had to be made in order to issue a permit is negligible risk to public health. The Health Department has not felt comfortable with mixes, and that would be a real learning curve for us. Again, multiple years ongoing because of targeting that bubble. Bear with me, I just want to make sure I covered. So with that said, what are the next steps? I really want to make sure that the management options that I'm aware of are all there is, and granted, another season has gone by with this species in Lake Memphormagog with no management, but I need more time to just make sure. I don't think that we have an option available to us that's at least cost-effective based on the density of the population, and that lends itself to moving to the next step of spread prevention, maybe slowing the spread in Lake Memphormagog by public awareness until we know more about this species, and certainly trying to prevent additional spread within Orleans County to additional water bodies that we know have high use, a lot of public access, and that many locals and non-locals alike rely on for a variety of activities, whether that's additional signage, more training, more VIPs, getting more VIPs to keep an eye out. We do have a public access greeter program, there is no mandatory wash or decontamination in this state, but we do work with local communities to place volunteers and paid staff at public access points to educate folks that come in. We now have a portable decontamination units, we have two of them that rove around the state. One of those units was on South Bay this August, interacting with people, again, talking about starry stonewort, its recent find in the lake, getting folks to understand the importance of cleaning, draining, and drying their equipment. That work should continue in 2017 and beyond, and I'd love to work with the city about ways that we could expand or implement some of those programs on Memphormagog, and certainly monitoring so that we have a better understanding of what this species is doing in our lakes. That's all I had for an update? I'm happy to entertain questions if there's more time from the council's perspective.
Yeah, oh yeah, there's time. My question is, how long before it turns into Eurasian milkfoil that's a disaster? You know, or, or say the, lucky, knock on wood, one thing we don't have is zebromussels like Lake Champlain.
Mm-hmm.
But how long before it turns into zebrom like milkfoil? Because that's, to me, seems like they've been studying that to death for years. You know what I'm getting at?
From a density perspective?
Yeah, yeah, and that's the concern, is sometimes it seems like they study it, study it, and then it gets to the point that it's beyond, no, too late to do anything.
Well, part of, I think, the study is that, that we're trying to learn what we can, and these species in the meantime are growing at rapid rates. I wish I had an answer to that question, I don't know. We know it's a fast grower, how quickly it will spread in this environment, I can't predict. I will say though, that it will out-compete Eurasian water milkfoil. Some may think that milkfoil's worse than starry stonewort, and others may think starry stonewort is worse. Starry stonewort tends to form these dense mats that can be at the surface or hug the bottom, and that can vary over time. With Eurasian water milkfoil, it's always in the water column and it breaks the surface. So the lesser of two evils, it's hard to say, but I can't predict, unfortunately.
How does that affect the fifth population?
The dense, those dense beds will interfere with fish spawning, so that the fish won't be able to clear an area, those that spawn in that way, and it's not well-understood at this point.
Now, you had a map, so it came from the Midwest, mostly, I think? I've got one map.
It likely came through the Great Lake system, like many of our aquatic invasive species do, hook that one.
Right, that's what I was, but it must have come in on a boat, then?
Likely in a boat or through the shipping industry, that's the likely means of spread.
I was thinking of the lake here, I was thinking of the lake here, it must have come into, by a fisherman or somebody with a boat who brought, any type of boat.
It's hard to say, and then where was that person? Were they traveling in a lake in New York? It's not in Lake Champlain.
Right.
Or somewhere else, it's possible. One of the things that researchers at the New York Botanical Garden are looking at is whether that bubble will pass through the system of a bird. It's highly unlikely because of, it's mostly carbohydrate, which would break down, but it's possible, and because we don't understand the pathways, having that type of an understanding will be, will be helpful.
Our dear Canadians might have something to do with that.
They could, they're certainly culprits in many ways.
It's well-established in some European countries and in other countries, how do they manage it?
You have to think in terms of native versus non-native. So in those countries, it's native, so that the problems, the densities, aren't like what we see here, and it doesn't tend to grow in such a wide variety of conditions. You may not see it growing in the winter, for instance, so that biomass dies back, and it doesn't have the opportunity. Similar with many, our species, Eurasian water milkfoil, for instance, it's more like the plant community, and sometimes those beds can be dense. The stoneworts in general tend to form thick mats, but it's, it's in its native environment.
But what are the balances and checks? In the native environment, there are balances and checks. What are the balances and checks for starry stonewort? There must be some.
Well, we're learning that, and that's part of the research that has to happen, and some of it's environment, just that environment has its own checks on how well that plant does, but whether there are biological controls, insects.
Right, and Europeans would probably tell you that, or some of it.
Well, but think about it, they don't have a, it grows there, but they don't have a problem with it, so they wouldn't be studying why.
The scientific basis.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, and that's why a lot of what's happening in the U.S. research-wise is tapping into information elsewhere, but that's not what I do.
How much, I'm thinking of this summer, we've had a very dry summer, the lake is low, you probably noticed going to Scott's Cove today how low the lake is. I can tell you, we're, well, the halfway through October, we've only had about a quarter of an inch of rain for the whole month, which is usually very wet, and then so, I'm assuming that this type of summer probably helped all the non-native things grow even more than, because the sunlight and everything.
Absolutely, absolutely, that low water level means that sunlight's penetrating in areas where it normally wouldn't, and invasive species like starry stonewort, like Eurasian water milkfoil definitely take advantage of that, and they tend to have a more rapid growth pattern so that they can grow faster, whereas some of our native species don't have that advantage. Once you've got a dense population of one of those non-natives, they can crowd out the native species.
Yes?
How long period of time does it take to dry out the stems or those little bubbles before they're no longer able to reproduce?
Great question. The stems themselves dry out fairly quickly in bright sunlight. I don't know about the bubbles at this point, and that's another research question that needs to be answered.
Thank you. Once we have that information, wouldn't it be possible to say that a boat transferring from one lake to the other would be able to be left on shore for a minimum of three days or so to make sure that everything's dried up before it goes into another lake? Could that be a method of slowing the transference to the other bodies of water?
Absolutely, it may be, and what the recommendations are now for almost every aquatic invasive species is five days drying out of the water, and it's certainly easier from a public perspective to think about one set of recommendations that would cover everything, and maybe with starry stonewort, we'll learn that the bubble takes seven days, and those recommendations would be revised to say, dry your equipment for seven days. But also part of that spread prevention messaging is cleaning your equipment with high-pressure hot water, which will also target both plants and animals.
Are there any plans for that at Memphormagog, the high-pressure hot water?
Beth, I mentioned the decontamination units, and those are roving units, and I hope that some discussion with the city that we can put those units up here for a good portion of the time coming in 2017.
And we, the city has a boat washing station at the city dock with high-pressure hot water available.
Excellent.
The only unfortunate thing, it wasn't used this summer.
It's rare, it's rarely, usually just the yacht club uses it.
That's the issue, it wasn't used because we didn't have, to be honest with you, we didn't have the resources to have somebody sitting there to wash every boat coming in, that's the one unfortunate thing, the city. We had it going, one year, we had it, this whole boat wash station started way back, little history of the zebromussels.
Absolutely, because of the ordinance in Quebec.
Because of the ordinance in Quebec, because you can't put a boat in the U.S. side and go to Canada without having a zebromuscle sticker, because they do mandate it over the border, and that's how we started the whole boat wash. But it actually started with a grant, and it was over in Strawberry Acres at first, but then when the grant money ran out, the city moved it to the dock at the time, because it was really meant to be at Strawberry Acres for all uses, but unfortunately, this year, it was some resources on using it.
So the wash station is there, but it's not staffed?
It's not staffed. We had had greeters in the past, but they didn't wash people's boats, it was available for folks that wanted to.
See, personally, I think the state ought to do what Quebec does. I recommended that years ago, mandatory boat washing. When zebromussels first came in, I actually, you know, but no, I mean, the state can provide resources, whatever, because my idea was when we first got zebromussels, Quebec was very serious about it, and I said, well, maybe the state should mandate boat washings, because I could come with my boat, refuse a boat wash, and I could be carrying, and I could be carrying the starry stonewort or whatever, and that was the thing where, if it's voluntary sometimes, I think most people do wash their boats if approached, but it's just the idea, I think, sometimes I think the state should have, not that I like regulations, but have some more teeth into, you know, when it comes to washing.
And, you know, maybe that is something that the city could consider, we saw those decals like we do for boaters going to the Canadian side of the lake, and we saw them so that they can't launch unless they had that decal on their boat, or, you know, there's options.
That's a discussion that we should have, and there is funding, the city takes advantage, has taken advantage of the Aquatic Nuisance Control Grant and Aid funding, and that's an opportunity as well, and the state has the ability to use those funds for additional projects that might not be part of a municipal grant. Some of it depends on what funds are available, but we, that's a discussion that I'd like to have as well, to think about what we could do to improve spread prevention for Lake Memphormagog, to think about protection for Orleans County.
Because, I mean, in grand scheme of things, this boat launch is probably small compared, I think, I think a lot more boats use the Strawberry Acres boat launch than the city dock, and that's the issue.
Right.
Is we don't have the resources. We originally did have resources to send someone up there, but technically, that's in Newport Town and not Newport City, and so, but I know the Strawberry Acres boat launch gets a lot more use, I'm not sure about South Bay, but.
Well, I can share the two times that we were there, we tried to gauge the South Bay times to do early in the morning and late afternoon, early evening, and that, this was a weekend, a Saturday and Sunday, and use was very limited, I think there were five people in the morning and five people in the evening.
Yes.
I heard that somebody was up in Canada doing studies, but has, have we talked to Quebec or Canada about how much they would like to prevent it coming up into their part of the lake, and therefore, they might be willing to fund stuff that might help us prevent it from going up there?
I didn't talk funding, but. I didn't talk funding, but MCI was very accommodating. And the work that I did over the two days, I never would have found those public access points without their assistance. They provided three staff to me and a boat to survey. All that survey work was done underwater. So they were very accommodating and very interested in what's happening, whether that's an opportunity for funding. They should be a partner that's brought into this discussion of where we go forward.
Yes, go ahead.
Are you going to be at the steering committee meeting in November?
I can be. If that would be helpful.
I think that would be very, very helpful. Just for people's information, there's a joint steering committee between Quebec and Vermont that meets twice a year to discuss issues about Lake Memphamagog. And I think it would be most helpful if you'd be there.
Yeah, share the information there. I'd be happy to.
Yeah, I will do that, yeah.
Okay, anything?
Yes.
Could you make a short presentation on Eurasian milfoil control?
Anybody have any objections from the council? No? Go ahead.
Control for Eurasian water milfoil falls into similar categories that starry stonewort, plants in general. So chemical, mechanical, physical and biological. And there are a suite of options. There's information on our website. There's lots of great resources out there. I think the mayor mentioned that it's one of those species that's been around for a long time, so there's a lot known about it. There's no miracle cure. There's not one method that's going to take care of Eurasian water milfoil, especially in a lake like the size of Lake Memphamagog. What I recommend is to think about areas where the populations are dense, interfering with recreational use, and choose options that would allow or control those areas to allow people to get to deeper water or to use those areas where they're typically shallow. Eurasian water milfoil grows where there's sunlight. On average, that's fifteen to twenty feet. You mentioned taking a photo of a population this summer that was twenty to twenty-five.
It was last week, and it's about twenty feet of water there.
Wherever there's sunlight, it will go deeper. But channels. And one of the things that I've been talking to, or we've been talking to Andy, our lake section, about control at the city docks, control at Proudy Beach. And the methods that really make sense for small areas are benthic matting or some mechanical method where you're harvesting material or raking it out. None of those are methods that can be put in without regular maintenance, maintenance, especially the benthic matting. Those mats block sunlight from the plants, but plants and sediment can accumulate on top. So unless you're keeping those mats clean, taking them out, putting them back in. But they do provide instant relief from weeds if they're in a depth that is deep enough so that they don't interfere with swimming or boat prop. They can be very effective and cost-effective. You're welcome. And there's good information on our website, and I'm happy to talk to anybody specifically about that species or others directly, if you'd like.
Sue. Sue first, then Jackie next.
I'm Susan Watson, and I take part in the VIP control for invasive species. One thing I've noticed this year, I think this year and last year, Valerie, I've been in Scott's Cove with Valerie prior to this year. And we noticed there's less milfoil because there's a lot more starry stonewort, which seems to be moving the milfoil out. But the other thing that I've noticed is that if people have a buffer of a certain amount in front of their property, invariably, there's very few weeds, if any. And if they have no buffer and they move right down to the beach, you can, you can draw a line right down their property. And when you get in the water, it's filled with weeds, milfoil. And so that's a great way of preventing milfoil.
Absolutely. Those buffers shade out. And thank you for your VIP work, by the way.
Oh, you're welcome.
They act as shading. And even invasive species that are more tolerant of lower light, you'll see that exactly. And there's great information on our website about the need for buffers. There's the Lakewise program, if folks have heard about that. An opportunity for you to utilize an expert in the lakes to help you with buffers. And there's lots of things that can be done to not only help provide the shading, but also nutrient runoff from properties that don't have that buffer. And people think of lawns as being a great means of preventing runoff, but they're terrible at it. You need a nice duff layer. You need material to absorb nutrients. Every time it rains, that's a direct runoff into the lake. And there's lots of information on our website. Thank you for raising that.
Jackie, do you?
Yeah, just a couple of things. As far as spreading the invasive stonewort back to the Canadian side, even though it's not actually been found that way, wouldn't every possible motorboater in our lake, on our end, that travels in either South Bay or in the area outside of Scott's Cove unknowingly be spreading to Canada routinely? Because it's on our props, it's on our boats, it's being dragged from one end to the other. And any number of boats on a daily basis travel from our end of the lake to the Canadian waters. I would think it would just be a matter of a very short timeframe before it's going to be a problem everywhere.
It's certainly possible. How that mechanism of spread and how long that will take, there's a lot of factors that are involved. Just because you're in South Bay doesn't mean you have starry stonewort on your prop. You may, depending on where you go. And then does that material stay on as you travel? It's, so many factors are involved, but it's certainly true. But what, how the pattern will be in this lake, we can't predict. We know it's in the three locations at this point, and very dense in two of those three.
I was just gonna say, lake depth must make a difference, because we all know the Canadian side is much deeper than the US side. And rockier too, as far north you get. It's not as sandy as this end, and it's a lot deeper, so. You tend to find less milfoil in part of the lake up there because it is so deep. Even right up to the shoreline, it tends to drop off in places.
Starry stonewort is less particular, though. It will grow in places that Eurasian water milfoil won't. But absolutely, that rocky and the depth will help, certainly.
The other thing I wanted to mention was the suction vacuum system that you mentioned. I realize that that must be, you know, time-consuming and costly. But I know it's being used successfully in some of the smaller lakes south of us. And there's a number that was thrown out to me not too long ago, that about thirty thousand dollars is spent per season to have a diver use that suction machine. And unless, and this is to specifically work on the milfoil. And unless the entire plant is removed, including the roots, because what the diver does is he has like a trowel type of device that, once the vacuum system takes the whole plant out, he actually lifts on the surface of the base in order to remove the root and all. And that's the only way you can really successfully remove even one plant. And he does this in a small area every year. Is that something that you even think about considering for the city dock area alone? I know you can't use it in a very large area, but the city dock area where the boats are in and out in that confined space has really been problematic in that the mat isn't going to work because the low water is going to be dragged around by keels and such of the sailboats that are in there. So, I mean, I can just picture a mat being put down and just being dragged around by the keels.
So you're talking about Eurasian water milfoil control?
So I'm thinking a vacuum device in that specific area.
Absolutely, and that's a mechanical, a mechanical method that could be utilized.
Yeah, I mean, obviously it can be in a large area, like you said, but that's a relatively small area that we'd need.
With all this that's gone on the last few years, I've been almost nineteen years living where I am, off the Buffalo River. And I notice a big difference in the clams that we have, or the mussels, or whatever they are. I mean, we're talking about, we used to walk so badly that we would cut our feet every time we walked. We don't do that anymore. We don't have them anymore. That's a prime example of something that is, it's gonna go fast.
Have change.
Big change. Because there's, that's supposed to clean the lake. So there is a, I mean, that's coming, is what I'm trying to say.
The clams, the large ones that?
Yeah. Very sharp on your feet.
And we don't have them anymore, basically.
No, no. I mean, we're talking about having, walking around and picking up a handful. I mean, and when we could pick up a handful of nothing flat, you know? And it's, it's bad. That's what I'm saying. If things are getting worse instead of that.
I'm Jack Watson, and I live on Spruce Street, pretty much on the lake. And there's one situation we have. First of all, a lot of people don't probably realize that these vegetation needs something to feed on. And it's phosphate primarily, is it not?
It's phosphorus, a nutrient, and to some extent nitrogen as well.
So any way that that gets in the lake, including just runoff from a bank, I mean, that supplies a lot of phosphate. But what I wanted to bring out is that there are a lot of former camps and waterfront properties that don't have, they're on septic systems, they're not on a public sewer system. And some of them are original. And I think a lot of that affluent from those units, those those old systems finds its way into the lake. And I think that should be addressed, that those waterfront properties should have, you know. We have, in Derby, we're supplying that new store that's being built and a housing development up there, I hear, is going to be put on. And here we are right in Newport, on our lake, and we don't have proper septic systems. I mean, we have septic systems, but not proper sewage disposal.
So where I work in DEC is in the watershed management division. And the division has basin planners, and the state is divided up into five or six regions that those planners cover. And in this neck of the woods, it's Ben Kopans, who's actually based out of our St. Johnsbury office. Ben's worked with the Lake Memphamagog Watershed Association, and he's a real resource for a lot of the issues that we've talked about outside of aquatic invasive species. And I know that he's been working hard to raise awareness and to address some of those. And I would encourage more tapping into Ben for dealing with some of those issues in the watershed and in the lake itself. Because you can't just look at the lake. We're accustomed to that, but you need to turn around and look back up into the watershed as well, including what we've done to the lakeshore. But all of those things contribute to what the health of the lake is. And until we look at those and determine what's going on and try to fix them, we won't end up with a healthier lake system.
That's a result. And that was that in-depth study for the Clean Water Act, where they viewed all the watersheds. I mean, I've seen a lot of the data from that. And they said a large portion of the phosphorus here is coming from down, I call that downstream. I guess up-down, I don't know if you've heard of it. You know, it's coming up the Clyde, the Black. All those rivers coming into the lake is bringing, they said that's actually more of the phosphorus coming in the lake that the city of Newport, it's only like about two percent of that, or three percent, it's very small. If I remember the numbers, the big of it is all the tributaries coming in the lake. That's the thing you've got to work on. There's a whole statewide issue that's going to be worked on.
Right. But it's also those little things that we can do that may make that small difference. But absolutely, which is why looking throughout the watershed is so important.
Right.
And understanding the mechanisms.
Right.
Just to inform people, on the fifteenth, which is the day of the steering November fifteenth, in the afternoon, Ben will be doing a presentation on the phosphorus loading for the lake and upstream and things that have been done already. And talk about his pie chart and where the different phosphorus loading comes from. So that'll be an open public meeting. And hopefully, there'll be more. It's, oh, it's a B-side.
Great, on November fifteenth.
On November fifteenth, after lunch, so.
Anything else? Then I think we need to move on. Thank you. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you, Susan.
Moving on, the next item on our agenda is proposed. It's the proposed Main Street traffic study. Doug Mott, NVDA traffic planning specialist.
Thank you so much for your time. I'm returning
Again?
to discuss Main Street. And I wanted to just give a little bit of background. I think many or several people here were involved or participated in our last large transportation planning effort, which was the Northeast Kingdom Transportation Infrastructure Study, excuse me, which 2012, 13, it was really focused around EB5-related development and looking at transportation infrastructure and its ability to handle proposed growth as a result of development all over the region. So it was not only Newport City-focused, but there were a number of recommendations focused on Newport City. In that, we had to make choices, really, on the things that we could look at. And so when we were in Newport City, we really focused on Coventry Street, the section between Coventry Street and Railroad Square. And those were seen as sort of the major issues at the time by the council, by the city manager. And so those were the focus areas. And we also looked at other areas in Newport City and the surrounding area. But within the city proper, and certainly in Main Street, those were the focus. That was the focus of our efforts, and we came up with some recommendations. And to remind folks, the Railroad Square portion of that was actually voted on by the city council to be taken on by V-Trans, to be included in the state capital program. That was passed last year. So V-Trans is actually pursuing formal scoping, which essentially means they are going to revisit, but in a more detailed fashion, in an engineering fashion, to come up with a project to implement. So they will actually be engineering some infrastructure improvement, whether it's signals or roundabout, or, I mean, they're going to look at everything that we looked at. They're going to come back again. They're going to look at, there'll be some public process. And that is ongoing. What I am here tonight really to sort of get people to think about and get feedback on is revisiting some of those portions of Main Street, which we couldn't really accommodate in the study based on budgetary constraints, time constraints. So, and I know in speaking with Laura and with the police chief, that there are ongoing concerns, obviously, on Main Street in Newport City and related to traffic, related to pedestrian movements, related to bicycle movements. And NVDA is in a position this year to come back and actually fund a study for the city. And so I really wanted to come to the city council to let you know that this is something that we have in our work program to do this year. On the federal fiscal year, so October one, we're in a brand-new shiny year and ready to start a new project in Newport City. So I've had discussions and, you know, ideally go back and look at some of the things that we've already done and asked for, that were not acted upon. So our previous study, we don't want to reinvent the wheel, and we don't want to, you know, do things that are not needed. But really to start another planning process focused on Main Street, which was seen as having increased need that we really couldn't accommodate in our previous effort. So that's really why I'm here tonight. And, you know, we're basically, I guess my thought would be to work with the city manager, work with the city, to put together a steering committee. And that NVDA will essentially And that NVDA will essentially hire a consultant. Our timeline is something that we would do in this work year, so by the end of next September would be our drop-dead date essentially. But we would have ideally a consultant onboard before the holidays, assuming we could agree on a scope. And be meeting with someone to look at a formal planning process to address the concerns of traffic, pedestrian bicycle movements within the city on Main Street. And, you know, I'm happy to, you know, depending on budgetary constraints, we can look at whatever folks are really concerned about within this, within the city. My thought would be to focus again on, say, you know, Third here at Field and Second and really make sure that we're accommodating pedestrian movements throughout the corridor, which I would define as Railroad Square all the way up to Maplefield, maybe beyond, you know, really looking at the concerns of the city and citizens.
Is that getting too big out of your scope?
I guess it depends. Maybe not, maybe not. I mean, if you wanted to go up as far as say the 191.
Yeah, I was just thinking that might be.
Access road, get access into Gardner Park, I mean, I think it would be good to look at.
Absolutely, the access to Gardner Park seems to be one of the ones that's, I think we heard a lot of complaint, a lot of discussion over this past summer.
Getting in there.
Working one day, the light not working. It'd be nice if there was a happy medium where that light, when it was blinking, the traffic flowed a lot better.
Right.
But people were not stopping for pedestrian. Even though we had a pylon in the middle telling the pylon they have to stop, there's still warrants. I don't know if there's any way to set that light up or when is a pedestrian pushing the button, it goes from blinking to red to allow them to cross, because that was a big issue all summer.
Right.
But your study would do counts basically all summer.
Well, so I guess I'll talk a little bit more about what I would envision. So again, we would hire a consultant. This would be someone that is essentially an engineering planning firm. So they would have some engineering background, they would understand the design and standards for Class One Town highways, for state highways in the state Vermont, design elements and all of those things. We would come together as a steering committee, we would develop a purpose and need essentially justifying, what is it that we are trying to achieve and we would have a scope that we would put out to hire someone. But then, you know, we want to make sure that once we get onboard, we all understand what we're doing. We essentially have a public meeting where we want to get input from the public. We want to, we want to understand what the concerns are and make sure that we're all on the same page as we move forward. We would then develop some alternatives for the various locations within the study area. And again, we would go back out after those were developed to a public meeting to vet those and make sure that we again captured the concerns of the public, that the city is onboard. Certainly V-Trans would be part of this discussion as you got a Class One Town Highway, two numbered state routes coming, US state route going right through your city. So those would be sort of integral parts of the effort. And then after that, we would have a formal plan report that would be issued. And that would all be again completed ideally, you know, end of the summer, midsummer.
Eighty-eight or eighty-nine, when I was on the council back then, that was quite interesting. They said that there's going to be no, no left turns, just right turns off every street.
Coming down through Main Street.
Coming down through Main Street and that, it's a time they told us we needed a fullway stop up here on Third Street, which we put in place, but we get in all kinds of trouble by one of the shop owners at that time. So we backed off on it, but it was working well, but he obviously didn't want it and convinced us to pull it off.
The idea, I guess, is to have everyone at the table. So we would definitely want the business community to be part of the discussion. We definitely want your citizens and your voters to be part of the discussion, the city council. You're going to have to come up with a budget to implement some of these things. You need to be part of this process. You know, V-Trans is going to be part of the process. Hopefully they're going to fund some grants that, you know, do some work in the city or do some projects. That'll help and that will all be part of the mix. So in the end, we'll have recommendations, they'll have, you know, dollar amounts associated with that. They'll have funding possibilities, so whether they're grants or whether or not you try and work with the state again to get something on the capital program, which would certainly not be unreasonable.
I hope they don't come up with eight to ten traffic lights, say Railroad Square like that original plan.
Well, either that or it's the traffic circle, which one of you is worse.
I don't know. I think this, I don't know, I think it's a good idea just to get.
How much money are we spending on this study? Uh, well, the city is spending nothing, I understand. I'm not positive yet, I guess if we really, if we wanted to go to Gardner Park all the way up through Third Street, I mean, I think we may, NVDA may end up spending as much as $35,000, $40,000, something like that. I'm not certain that we would be able to accommodate that scope. So it's early in our work year, so now would be the time for us to do something. This would be our largest project of the year for sure.
I think we do need to, we need to update a traffic study. Obviously the month of eighty-nine, the traffic's a little differently with that.
Well, there are newer ones than that.
No, there's a lot of newer one, the last one, the last big one was.
Two thousand twelve, two thousand.
That went all the way.
So you've got some recent data to go back and look at.
Yes, and I did look at some numbers before I came this evening. And I looked over some of the public meeting presentations that were put out. I mean, there are things that, you know, I would think would be good to revisit before we started, you know, with a completely new slate, so.
Was that the study that went from Newport right through to Derby?
Yes, it also looked in Jay, Jay, Westfield, Troy, looking Burke and Linden. That was a two-year effort.
That was a two-year effort, right.
So.
But that's when you were looking at EB5 and.
Correct.
The influx, which the influx would have been lower than the influx that we had back in the late eighties when we had Bogers and Slalom and, you know, we had like six hundred employees.
But there's good data in that study that you can use to augment this study.
Absolutely, absolutely. There are recommendations in there that it would be, I think, a good idea to look at again.
Well, we got to look at the future too, hopefully something will win in that space. So we don't want to ignore that completely.
Well, we didn't look at anything really, we looked at the access to the Bogner building, but we didn't really look at the intersections in detail between Third and Coventry Street. So, and we didn't really go, I mean, we looked in a systematic way, so it was very high level.
Now, this, just had a thought pop in, this study would take place, you said it would be done by the end of September next year.
Correct.
Would it be done during the summer months? Because it gets busier downtown during the summer months than it does during the winter months.
Correct, yes, so we have historic counts, the counts I was looking at this evening are twenty fifteen counts. They're always a year behind. But they show the section of Main Street between Coventry and Railroad Square as, I want to say around fifteen thousand vehicles.
A day.
A day.
Yeah.
About nine, ten thousand up this way, I think between Third and Bayview and then nine, ten thousand between Railroad Square and Gardner Park. So those are all twenty fifteen numbers. So the numbers that we had in twenty twelve were actually a little bit higher than that. So twenty ten numbers showed almost sixteen thousand vehicles a day in that, that section of road, which is probably the highest, the annual average daily traffic in our region. Is that section of road between Coventry Street and Railroad Square. But you can see it dissipate as soon as you get away from that little section.
I think we should let them go ahead and, this is, they're going to be doing it.
Right.
It's across the city and.
So, and I will work with your city manager as my point of contact.
Chief.
Chief, pretty much looking forward to that, so. Be happy to come back and report.
And you'd be the one coordinating a public meeting where we get everybody.
Yeah, and I would think, so the public meetings, we'd be happy to come back and give updates to the city council. Those public meetings will probably be done outside of this board, just so we had more time.
Yes.
More, more feedback.
Sure.
Yep. Good.
Good luck, thank you.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Todd.
Thanks, Todd.
Next item is contract time fees and rate adjustment, Chief DeSanto.
Evening.
Evening.
We can use that thing anymore?
Oh, you haven't used it?
I'm going to throw it apart now. Um, let's see, up first we are on contract fees.
Yes.
So did each of you get a copy of this memo?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So the memo in and of itself is pretty self-explanatory, but would be change in part-time fee structure and night shift differential for full-time fee structure based on the union contract. It's getting extremely difficult to accurately assess someone's fee ahead of time for a special officer detail. Furthermore, we've heard multiple complaints now that because of the spread due to the union contract is so great between that and the part-timers, that a person would say to me, well, I don't want the fifty-two dollar an hour officer, I want the seventeen dollar an hour officer. And while I can understand that from the consumer's perspective, what they want is a qualified personnel in uniform to mitigate any circumstances that they see fit.
Right.
I showed you in the memo how it came up with a fifty dollar an hour fee. And then just doing some quick checks with some local businesses currently mechanic rate fifty-eight dollars an hour. Fred's plumbing, a plumber, seventy dollars an hour and electrician, eighty dollars for the first hour, sixty dollars each additional hour.
Harvest equipment, seventy-eight dollars an hour working in traction.
So.
Is that some work done?
I think with the amount of training that we go through, fifty dollars an hour is not unreasonable. And it would be to the discretion of either myself or the supervisors whether or not a patrol car was needed. This in no way, shape or form affects the officer's pay. Any residual money made to the city would go into the general fund, but it would be a lot easier for military purposes.
It doesn't make sense, you don't want the person that's hiring you dictated who you're going to send.
Exactly.
So how many hours did we provide those services last year, seven?
Hour-wise, I couldn't tell you. This year it's going to be significantly reduced because we're not doing the high school details.
The dancers, right.
Right, and the hospital details have been cut. Not fully, but partially. So these are things for like, we used to do a lot of them at the Gateway Center, but now with the new.
Private functions.
RFP with natural poos. Those have somewhat mitigated, so you're looking at things like traffic details, special sit-watch at the hospital for mental health patient. Cable company occasionally will hire us to do some blue light standbys that, instructions and things like that.
I think fifty dollars an hour is extremely reasonable unless they.
Yes, so would you want to make a motion?
I certainly would like a motion to accept the chief's proposal to raise the per-hour rate to fifty dollars for special detail officers.
Motion made by Mr. Vincent, is there a second?
I'll say.
Set by Mr. Robert, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. Okay, the next item, request to finance new police cruiser, Chief DeSanto. So I will pass out, we actually not have a copy.
No, I was looking for it.
I will pass out this to you, give you a minute to read through that.
That's six, seven grand in repairs, is any of that bodywork or is that mostly mechanical, Chief?
Mechanical.
Yeah, okay.
So additionally, over the weekend, after having written this memo, we had an officer responding to a domestic assault involving a race while that, and that car died on him. He took it to Hays Ford today and dropped another two hundred and sixty-six dollars and seventy cents into it for apparently was on firing on two of the six cylinders.
Electronics or whatever?
Not a mechanic, but I have a bill here that explains. Additionally, I have all of the repair orders from Race and Hays Ford as to what's been done to the vehicle specifically because while I'd like to be able to answer your questions, I'm certainly no mechanic, I am stretch of the imagination. Estimate from Hays Ford was twenty-seven, seven, seven, four. I did not obtain additional estimates from other car companies for two reasons. One, Hays Ford works off the state contract pricing and two, trying to do business locally to support city businesses.
Is that option for extended warranty something new?
It is not something new, it is something that I, since I became chief, I had purchased on the two vehicles that I had involvement with, the two cruisers that were now replacing were before I took the position as chief. So they, I don't know what was available at that time, I can just tell you that they did not have the extended service plan.
So had we purchased that on that twenty thirteen, we would have seven thousand dollars worth of repair bills. Yeah, I buy it on all my, they're so complicated today, it doesn't take much to chalk up a half a year period.
The twenty-nine, four, ninety-nine, twenty-nine, four, four, nine.
Yes.
What's the other cost?
The vehicle outfit.
The lights, yeah, the outfit cost.
Swapping things right now.
I will tell you that ninety-nine percent of the equipment that comes out of the old car will be able to be put into the new car. I say ninety-nine percent because when you start tearing radio wires out and stuff, there's always a little something that breaks here or there, but for the most part, the big-ticket items are already paid for and they are swappable from model year to model year.
So is this assuming a trade-in, Chief, or what do we?
What we normally do with the vehicles after they're stripped is we'll put them out for bid. And then any money that's made on those vehicles goes back to the general.
What do you think about fire?
I was saying the same thing.
Or one for, for a fire chief? It sounds like you got it up to pretty good mechanics, huh, if you've got the kind of money. I don't know, just a thought.
Mr. Wilson, something?
I thought in the budget, this last year, you were allowed to buy one and a half vehicles and then one and a half the following year. So then this following to what was budgeted last October and approved in March by the taxpayers.
Yes, sir.
I think what we did, John, was a vehicle every year and a half, right? It wasn't, yeah, a vehicle every year and a half, I think is what the original proposal was. So how?
Right now we have, yeah, right now we have eight thousand five hundred and forty-six dollars allocated towards a vehicle this year. See, in the past, what had happened was is we would lease the vehicles through Hays Ford and you would have to pay a third of that vehicle off in one year. But now because we're financing them from Sunset Bank, we're just making a monthly payment each month. So in addition to that, the interest rate is way lower through the Sunset Bank than it is through Ford's leasing program. Therefore, we're A, paying less in interest, but B, because we budgeted that eight thousand five hundred and forty-six dollars, essentially speaking directly to your question, yes, we have this money in our budget to be able to afford this vehicle. Additionally, considering the fact that likely it wouldn't be here until sometime after December because it's a special date, like we can't just order it and have it within a few weeks.
So we've already, by the budget, said you can have the vehicle.
Yes, sir. I just.
Courtesy tells Tom, I'm getting it.
Yes, sir. Unless you order it out to.
So can we talk about the?
I'd say I'd like to follow up on Steve's point. Is that something that maybe the, we're not going to get before selling it, are we going to get? Would that's something that probably we could retrofit or that the fire chief could use? Because he's using his own vehicle for everything.
I guess I would defer to him if you ask him.
Well, I'm looking at him, but he knows, looking back. That cruiser, that's something that you could use rather than us selling it for fifty cents on a dollar?
I guess it's a, it's a, I mean, how much money do I have to put into it? I guess, it's a, it's a, it's a, I mean, how much money do I have to put into it to keep it going?
Well, we could always buy, because you, you can buy uh, those plan that he's, that he's gonna get with his new, you can, you can buy those still.
For the hundred thousand mile cruiser?
Sure.
It's almost like putting bad money.
For me.
I hate to put good money into bad money if the vehicle is having that many issues, in my opinion. No, what I'm saying is, how, what's gonna say that it might not break down again and again and again?
Well, but it won't be used as hard as what they're using, 'cause I'm getting it.
Well, that is the other consideration, and I know that we had talked previous to this about, you know, how these new vehicles are better and they're made more regularly, et cetera, et cetera, and while all of that is true, the issue, and I don't care who makes the police car, and I don't care how indestructible they tell you it is, these two vehicles that have the highest mileage right now are run twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And while it may have ninety-six thousand miles on it, which would equate to something in the neighborhood of nine thousand idle hours, I bet you find that the idle hours on that vehicle, I can, I can tell you that the counter is maxed out on them.
Oh, really?
Um, because they're just run constantly.
Engines never shut off?
No, and so.
So it's probably.
While my vehicle has seventy-six thousand miles on it, I'm the only one that drives.
Well, and that's what I'm getting at, he'll be the only one driving, if it's gonna be run twenty-four, seven.
I guess it gets to the point where it does cost us a bunch of money to repair it, then get rid of it.
Then get rid of it, because we're gonna get, what, three, four, five thousand dollars for it maybe?
If that.
If that.
Body's okay, huh?
The body's great.
Yeah, it's a ninety.
All right, it's twenty-three, nineteen.
Two thousand thirteen, so. I, I think the idea makes sense, but.
We can try it, I mean, we're not.
Because we used to give, we used to give the city manager, remember?
Old boy, yeah.
And they'd have two, two hundred and fifty thousand miles on them, and they were stiff.
You could hear him coming for many miles away. Smoke coming out the back, he didn't care.
Yeah, what do you think, Chief, I don't know, I.
I mean, I guess, I'll probably have to sit down with Seth then, I mean, 'cause I don't wanna have a small budget, and I don't wanna eat it up because I've got.
I understand.
A hundred dollars worth of equipment that take up measuring my budget, just in certifications and bomb testing and all that. If I'm gonna dump, you know, three or four thousand dollars into it, I mean, that's what's gonna get out of it in a, in a bid or something. We're really, burning money.
Yeah, if he has something major going on, he wants to see it, we'll just get rid of it.
Let's get rid of it. It's running now. He's gonna run it till December till the new one gets here.
And then what would you do?
Then he'd go back to using his own vehicle, I guess, till we can figure something else out.
Until, until the next cruiser comes along, in a year and a half.
So are you advocating stopping his stipend now?
Yes, I mean.
Can't you give a stipend now?
Oh, yeah, correct, oh, yeah, yeah, yes, yes, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, you can't have both, yeah, you're right there.
Yeah.
Because if he wrecks his vehicle on city, on city business, who's gonna be liable for it?
We are.
The stipend's not uncovered. If he's on his way to a fire and he gets into a, that major accident with that, with his own vehicle.
I'm looking, Seth says this is gotta go, it's not mechanically good anymore. And he's got the money in the budget to buy his new vehicle, why would we wanna hang on to a piece of crap and dump it on the chief?
Well, that makes sense, it would not be.
He's got the money for the vehicle.
Well, there's no question you can have the new vehicle, that's not, that's not part of the debate, it's just I'm wondering if that is, if you change that concept.
He wouldn't be running nowhere near as hard as what it's run down, you know, he won't be chasing anybody without help.
Yeah, well, just hope that if it's Seth's house on fire and Jamie's leading the way and you can't start and get to the damn fire station.
Well, then he'll have to hop his own pair of hands.
Well, it was just.
Well, we need a motion on this.
Uh, on the purchase of the new one, I'd make a motion that we allow the chief to purchase the new cruiser.
Yeah, I'll second that.
So a motion made to allow the chief to purchase the new cruiser. And it was made seconded, any discussions on that aspect?
No.
And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Now we should have a motion regarding the, what to do with the old cruiser.
Okay, well, can, can we table last for now until we can find out more about the mechanics and what's been repaired? And let the two chiefs talk about it and maybe come back to us with, with a proposal.
Yeah.
I mean, I, if you don't want it, fine, I don't have a problem, I'm just saying there's an opportunity, it's a twenty thirteen, we put seven grand into it. Maybe it's just what you need for two years, I, I don't know, and there'll be another cruiser coming behind this one.
No, 'cause you won't get that, you said till December.
Correct.
And then how long before we replace the old one, uh, in the year?
Well, I would like it to be in July of two thousand and eighteen. Yeah, July, uh, no, July of two thousand seventeen, but the new fiscal year.
Yeah, I was gonna say, 'cause that one's not gonna go that long. Right.
So.
And how many miles would that one have roughly?
Right now it has, uh, the one we're getting, going to get rid of has ninety-six thousand.
No, not that one, the next one in line.
Eighty-three right now.
Around eighty-three right now, and it, it would be with us till July, so it'll have more than ninety-three probably.
And it'll have well over a hundred.
Well over a hundred. And we're still gonna have that service, this one has ninety-three, so, I don't know, it's up to you guys, I mean, we, we own it?
I think it's a good idea to buy some time with it.
Yeah, why don't you guys talk about it and get back to us, yeah.
Yeah, we'll do a, leave it at that.
We'll see what Neil thinks and uh, talk with John and work it out.
Okay.
Okay, and the next item, Chief, you have an update regarding police officer training?
I did. I don't believe it was the last council meeting, it was two council meetings ago, we had um, some discussion conducted with the public in reference to our police department was trained, or what type of training they received. I sat down with Joe Gresser from the Chronicle, we did a rather lengthy interview in front of him. Yeah, in reference to some of the trainings that we take. But I thought it pertinent to give the city council and the public. To give the city council and the public um, an idea of the incident that was brought to our attention and the subsequent fallout, fallout from it. I would like to mention to the press that I have permission from the juvenile's mother to play this video, but I would request out of respect for the family that you not record the video or take photographs of the video, just for the family's sake.
You know, the camera is running here, it will pick up the video.
Hey, can hear the sound is fine, and there's nothing we can do about that, but at least not showing us.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
So, in the particular incident that was. In the particular incident that was brought to light, um. There was some concern that the police department was chasing a minority figure, which was what was brought to the attention of the public. This woman off to the right here is the juvenile's mother. She's come to the police department to lodge a complaint with Officer Jacobs, who happens to be one of our newest officers, freshly graduated from the academy, that her son is refusing to get back into the car and then left out of the car and took off on foot, and she's asking for him to be returned. So Officer Jacobs um, leaves the police department, and this is his body cam footage that you're looking at here. I'm going to, in the interest of time, I'm not gonna have you watch this whole thing, 'cause it's about two and a half hours long. But I want you to note specifically the way that Officer Jacobs began talking to this kid.
Hey, man. Hey, just took off running here. Hey, just wait, guys, let's talk to you, let's talk to you.
So he's just asking the kid, can I talk to you, the kid's saying no, he keeps walking down the street. The officer doesn't give foot chase to the subject at all. I'm gonna fast forward two minutes and fifteen seconds here, where he catches back up with him across the street in Adrian's parking lot.
Yeah, we're on your phone, I can pick you up. It's a little dark, you're so bad, bud. I'll be able to call you, Adrian. Can you tell me where it's at? Whoa, I need to, how can I help you? Just a little bit, bud, relax, I'm not gonna leave you, just let's talk to you. Here, man.
The lad takes off, runs around the police car to the other side of the vehicle.
Just, I gotta do, talk to me.
Officer Jacobs gives chase to him a couple of times, they end up jumping in the patrol car. He's now running down, three times into traffic, once across Main Street underneath Coventry Street. And this is now what Officer Jacobs decides is necessary to take this kid into custody. He climbs over to this wall, and with twenty-seven pounds of gear on decides that I'm gonna have to leap over this wall to get this kid. Luckily not breaking his ankle. Now he starts running after the kid on the boardwalk, because he's not sure what he's gonna do after that. This part I found particularly interesting coming from a rookie officer. He can see the suspect right now. And yet has the wherewithal to start joking around with these people as he's walking by, he's not hostile, he's not angry, he's not upset, despite the fact that he's run three times after this kid now and jumped over this wall. So, they finally catch up with him down at the uh, boardwalk and begin to take him into custody. Now, this is where I will tell you that I personally, as a police chief, have a major way, a major problem with the way that these officers acted in this particular scenario, and I'm, oops, I'm gonna play for you that interaction here at. So this goes on for several minutes of him telling them to leave him alone, and they're explaining to him, look, you're in DCF custody, I, I, we have to take you back, your mother's reported you as a missing juvenile runaway, he continues to scream and calls a scene.
Hey, we're not doing you, we wanna help you. We, we don't wanna be doing that. Okay, we wanna help you, please, you need help? You're being contacted.
These officers are.
Not ever. Tell us what's going on. I'm not letting you talk to your guys. How can we help you? You tell us, and we'll, we'll work with you, we'll show you that we're not making you.
He then refuses to go with the officers, so they have to start physically picking him up and carrying him, and then he finally says, all right, fine, I'll walk with you.
Hey, look, come on, we're walking, okay? No, I'm not, why are you gonna fight with us? This is my. Dude, we don't wanna fight. I just want, we should get away from you. Will you give me a chance, you let me show you I'm trying to help you?
All right, so I think at this point, you gotta be, so in thirteen minutes and fifteen seconds into, after they have him controlled but not handcuffed, they then call for a supervisor, because he refuses to go into handcuffs. Now, if it's me, and I'm dealing with someone in the public, and they tell me that they're not gonna go into handcuffs, I can assure you, I'm not going to wait for a supervisor to show up to decide whether or not they think that's appropriate police conduct. So then, after Sergeant Moulton shows up and says to him, you're gonna go into handcuffs, he complies and goes into handcuffs. Bear with me one second, 'cause I hate this new law. So this is now back at the police department.
I just want some kind of guarantee from you that this is what I'm putting in. I, I really hope not, because not only because I might look like I should do other stuff, but because you're running through the streets, getting hit by a car, I don't feel, I don't see that use in, that, I, I want you to show them, we are here to help you. We have a problem, so we want you, I want you to listen, okay? We're not gonna stand me up or arrest you or whatever you think we're here for, we're here to help you. If there's anything you wanna tell me, you know, go here.
I don't wanna air Moose's personal family history, but this kid's.
Monster Jacobs and Sergeant.
Screw it, thank you, guys, bye, everybody.
Thank you, thank you, come now, okay? Oh, yeah, Monster Jacobs and Sergeant Moulton. I need something sort of to talk about. Go ahead.
He's just down watching, so.
I aim yourself to, uh, your husband.
Okay.
Yeah, I got it. I hope to see you again. If you're up here and you're working, we'll just be in for it, if you're lucky, we'll forget.
I guess my first question I would pose to the city council is, is there anything that you see in that video that you wouldn't want your own family to be treated like from the police? All of it?
All of it, absolutely.
You're kidding me.
I'm not kidding.
I'll tell you what the problem, I'll tell you what the prob, no, it's not, but here's the problem. If the mother comes inside and we say to her, go be a parent, and parent your own kid, and he goes out and hit by a car, you'd be the first person in here saying, what did you do to save the kid?
Any of us, our children could have been hit by cars, and I raised a child who was.
Absolutely, so what would you have us do in that particular circumstance?
I would not call the police, there needs to be some other way to deal with these things.
She's come to the police department, am I supposed to wash my hands of this scenario?
And, and I hear that piece of it, but I do find it disturbing to refer to the kid as a quote suspect. Suspect of what?
He's not suspected of anything, he's already started.
He is suspected of being in DCF custody and escaping from his foster parent.
That's not a crime, escape from.
It is a delinquent act.
On the street. He's a kid.
Okay, despite my terminology used for the.
Which appalls me, Seth, appalls me.
I'm sorry that you're appalled, Anne, which way did he treat, which, I'm sorry, which way did my officers act that you found appalling?
I found your use of the word suspect appalling, because I think that's a mindset, and I think the goal of community policing, or one of the goals, and I've heard this from Burlington too, is about de-escalation. What I see there is escalation of the situation.
You see there, when my officers go.
I see a scare.
Let him answer the question, please. Let him answer the question, and then you ask your question, let him answer.
When my officers go up to him and attempt to place him in handcuffs, and he starts struggling with them, and they don't dump him on the ground as they should have, which is the one point that I made that I have a problem with what my officers did, because that's the way that we control uncontrollable people, is to take them to the ground. You have a problem with the way they de-escalated that situation to walk him back to the police car uncuffed?
No, actually, I think he's better off uncuffed, I don't see that cuffing a kid as a solution, I really don't.
And if the officers have been injured, or they injured the suspect, would that have been acceptable?
No, of course not.
So what is the right answer? The parents come to the police department and demanding that the police do something. We de-escalated the situation, and then you guys come out and say that you don't like the way, and we need further training on how we f, deal with people in the public.
I don't think that's how it was presented.
That's exactly how it was presented.
No, that was not what I was saying, I was sitting here at the time.
I want to assure that our police have adequate training. We watched a scenario where you felt the need to interact with the police to make sure everything was okay. My question to you is, what's not okay there?
Can I just, the whole problem is, is that there should have been, there's, should be another way to deal with this, this is not a police matter in any way, shape, or form.
I agree to that to a certain extent.
The kid has committed a crime, and how old is, I don't know, but we can't ask that maybe, how old the kid is? I mean, we all have, have difficult children, with difficult problems.
So when he starts running off down the street, ma'am, what do you want us as the police to do? Just wave to him and say, good luck, don't get hit?
But didn't the mother, that's when, did the mother ask you?
Did the mother have another option, did she have other?
She came to the police department asking us to respond.
That's what I'm saying, this whole thing started with the mother requesting the police to do something to help.
And I agree with you that it may not be a police issue, but a runaway from DCF custody is a delinquent act that we have to act upon.
Instead, instead of dealing with this, then arguing about this, what are we doing to set up some alternative? I know a lot of places are setting up uh, non-police counselors who can come into a situation like this, um, and try to mediate.
I think all of those are fantastic ideas, and we should set something up like that. However, we're the police, that's not what we do.
No, it's not what you do, that's why I think that this whole thing is awful.
So my question to you is, how would you like my officers, officers to respond any differently than they did in the video?
Isn't that a talk to the mother a little more, maybe that's more information about.
While the child's running through the street?
What's the evidence that he was, that he can, that he's running through the streets, maybe going to the.
I just showed you video footage of him running, he almost got hit by the police car.
No, no, that's where he's being chased. Well, that's where he was being chased. Right. Then start running until people were chasing him.
He came back towards the police officer who's standing in Adrian's. He's walking back towards him, he's not being chased. In fact, the officer stopped pursuing him right in the beginning of the video. What I'm asking you is, is despite the fact that I disagree adamantly with you coming here and explaining to us how you feel the police should respond, I am willing to listen to what it is the public has to say about alternative interactions with the public. I have watched this video now six times and I see absolutely nothing wrong with what my officers did or how they treated this person.
I mean, I didn't come here with anything. I came to a city council meeting, I'm just kind of shocked. I mean, it's nice to hear about the, like, issues, but it's like it's totally shocking. I didn't come to say this.
You know, I'm sorry that two things came together at the same time. What's happening generally, the police actually shooting unarmed victims.
Kids.
Kids in other communities. And then just beginning to see some of this. And I said at the time, I didn't know what the original circumstances were. I didn't know whether or not anything was going wrong. All I wanted to assure is that there is significant, not just general training, but training on diversity, training on how to de-escalate a situation, conflict resolution training for the police. So that we're sure that in general, we know how to handle things. With respect to this from the child's perspective, I think it's really scary when you think about it to have two policemen with guns. And I could hear the guns jiggling all the way down the street. Two policemen chasing him. He could get scared and he may not have been, he may have had other issues before even this incident started. I don't know what his background is, number one. And number two, the touching that goes on between the officers and him. And him saying he didn't want to be handcuffed. You know, this is a child, this is not an adult. You know, you do some of these things to me, I understand the situation. But all of these things are scary to a child. And I'm not necessarily saying anything that the policeman specifically did here was wrong. I'm just saying, the more training you have with respect to how to defuse, how not to use a significant force, and how to handle diverse individuals who may have mental problems, minorities, the more hours of that training as opposed to just how to load the weapon, how to shoot the weapon, that's important. I was never saying that I knew that anything was wrong with this situation. I'm just saying, the better trained your officers are on those issues, the less chance there is that the child gets hurt or the policeman feels responsibility for the rest of his life for having done something. That's it.
Well, I'm gonna just interject one thing. I think the police do a darn good job. They know how to de-escalate situations. The chief alerted me to a situation where you had to deal with a gentleman who basically wanted, what, kill, kill me and kill police officers. He was off his medication, but they dealt with the situation. The officers managed to get him peacefully into treatment. And so I think, you know, I guess it's kind of alarming to me when I get the email that the chief had kind of informed me what had been going on behind the scenes. And I think they did a great job in that case. I think they have the de-escalation training. I mean, every situation is unique and different. And I look at the bottom line here as the mother requested help. And that's where they, they're not gonna respond? If I call the police, I want help or anybody, I would hope that the police respond. You know, in situations like that.
What I see in this situation here, three officers had this child. They didn't hurt him. They got him back to the police station, they got him back with his mother. He went with his mother at the end, there were no charges filed that I know of.
None.
He was released into his mother's custody and he got into the car and he went home. He probably learned a good lesson. He probably learned the police aren't out here to hurt me. I think it was handled very well.
Right. And listen, I, I want to clarify something here. This is not to, the purpose of me showing this video is not to combat anything that you said. You're entitled to your own opinion and I staunchly believe in free speech. What I am saying is, I want you and the other members of the public that were concerned to the point to bring up, the national climate of law enforcement does not necessarily apply to the Newport Police Department. And while we need to be cognizant of what is going on on the national level and adjust our tactics accordingly, this is exactly how I want my family treated by the police. I don't know if you guys have any other further follow-up or you're looking for anything more from me?
This is a sideline, so has he had any more interaction with the officers? I mean, have they...
He was down here shooting, so that's today.
Perfect. That's what I wanted to hear, perfect. Perfect.
Actually, can I ask a question about logistics?
Yes, ma'am.
Was that the foster mother in the video?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And did she seek help from her social worker before engaging you?
Prior to coming here, no. They were driving down the road, he literally jumped out of the car, ran into traffic. And then she pulled over right in front of the police department, gets out, runs inside and says, "He just took off into the street."
Thanks.
Thanks, Chief.
You're welcome. Thanks for the time. Hey.
Maybe he needs a chair. Oh, maybe he's got a chair.
Chief, would we put that other light on?
Yes, sir.
It is a little dark up here.
Halloween Monster Bash events request and a telephone.
Yeah, so this is an event that we started, I don't know, about six or seven years ago. Halloween event where we offer trick-or-treating to kids on the various stores on Main Street. And then a carnival type event in the gym here. So I wanted to make sure that you were aware of what was going on, see where it's happening. And to invite you to participate. And to let everybody know that we do have a candy drop outside the, our office here too. That we are asking for candy donations because the Main Street businesses see at least 500 kids and it's a pretty big burden on them. So, and then answer any questions you may have about the event.
This is the 29th Saturday.
Unfortunately, Beetlejuice won't be around this year.
Well, Beetlejuice was a star last year, so I'm sorry.
It won't be around. I'm gonna be out of town, so.
Good.
The old conductor will come back.
And we, the volunteers and staff, we typically dress in accordance to a theme. This year are being as appliances, so.
And you're gonna be a forland.
I'm gonna be a forland.
So, we only, any questions on this? I believe Andy filled everything out from what I can tell.
No, no, that's fine.
A motion that we, that we go ahead with the Monster Bash on the 29th.
I'll second it.
From one to three?
One, one to three. And we're working on further events coming up too, including the Santa Fest and the Winter Fest. And we'll likely be back for at least one of those, if not both.
So Mr. Robichaud made the motion, is there a second by Mr. Vincent? Any other discussion? And all those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries. Great. Next, thank you, Andy. Next item, Comcast easement request. We had you say...
That's the original.
In that packet?
This is a request from Comcast to provide high-speed internet to the World Edge Building that is behind our Main Street. So it's the corner of Central Street going to Coventry Street. We own the parking lot, or at least half the parking lot back there. So Comcast has a request to make easement to be able to dig a trench to be able to convey their cables through our parking lot.
Just behind the old Sears store?
To service, yeah, that's a service.
To service the World Edge Building, the senior housing there.
Oh, wow.
And in anticipation of your approval or decision, I had Tom Bernier take a look at this in his role as public works director. He sees no issue with it. There's a map in color attached to the original, if you'd like to show it around. It shows exactly where the line goes through.
You got the block in white?
Yeah, I got the block in white.
Yeah, you probably need the red dotted line.
It's over here and it's gotta come over here.
And we plow the public parking area, the part that the city owns. There's gonna be no structures put in the way, there's not gonna be any surprises put in the ground. As far as Tom is concerned, he sees no issue with it. The writing of the easement itself, I did have our city attorney review. And they have, they have approved the easement to give you confidence if you choose to approve the request.
They'll be boring, I'm sure.
No, they're gonna, so they're gonna be, they're gonna be kind of trench in the pavement. They're gonna replace it.
Yes, can you, can you show Jack the map?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I got the map.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Can you see the color?
That one's got color, I don't know if it's...
Oh, okay, I didn't see, I don't have a coat. So it's not major damage, it's just a trench, they're gonna need a cable, yeah. Should we make, should we make him wait eight or nine months like they did? Yeah, we can.
I don't wanna get involved.
Mr. Robichaud, so whatever they cut a trench line in there, they're gonna pay it back again?
Yes.
They need to raise the payment.
I had it written right there.
I'll make sure to do that.
Yeah, cause it's settled.
Cause at the gateway, it's not equal where they dug.
Send them back to the gateway and pay it?
Right, they've gotta go back there, that's what maybe think of it. Make sure they, when they put it back in, they level it. Because where they dug at the gateway, there's a dip.
Okay.
Yeah, so. Make sure Tom approves of what are they working on.
So we need a motion to approve this easement? Motion made by Mr. Robichaud, is there a second to approve the easement? Oh, second by Mr. Vincent. Any discussion on this? And hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, motion carries. So we date it here. So you're gonna have to have it go to rise downstairs?
Yeah, Stacy can do that.
She can see through another ring.
Stop, go.
Do you want somebody else to witness this? Or you want me to be the witness here in the room?
Can you do both? I think probably you can, yeah. Yeah.
Some places will let you, some places won't.
I think we might, huh? Okay.
The next one is an update of our existing bike path easement. We've had one in place for a number of years. This one covers 2015, 2016, and 2017. The changes in this one is that the name of the railroad company has changed, so it updates that. It updates the payment terms and it fixed some minor typos.
What was it in '14, you know?
I'm sorry?
What was the fee in '14?
I'm gonna say it was, it was a little bit less than $3,000, is what I think. So it's gone up to $3,700 for 2015, $3,700 for 2016. And it'll be $3,737 in 2017. And we'll budget that and make that payment on July 1st of 2017.
$3,377, this is $3,700 here.
That's for '16, for '17.
No, the base renewal rent for each calendar year beginning January 1st, 2017 is $3,700?
Base.
Base.
Base renewal.
Okay.
And that has also been approved by our attorney, assuming your approval.
I think they should do it for nothing. It's a bike path.
Yeah, but the railroad's now owned by a hedge fund.
I know, I know, I know.
There's always been a fee.
That'll explain, I'll tell you.
There's been a fee since the 1990s.
Right. So.
Once again, it's a bike path.
Yes.
It's in the, right away, covers two, two classes.
So we need a motion to approve this?
So, we don't have a choice.
No, we don't. So a motion made by Mr. Vincent, is there a second?
Sure.
Second by Mr. Wilson, any other discussion on this? And hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, motion carries. Actually, there is a boo-boo that should be the 17th day of October. You mind if I cross it?
Please do.
Oop, another typo on page nine. And witness said parties here on set the hand to seal this 2000, I'll change it to be 2016. 17th day of October. 2016. I have Stacy be a witness there. Are you gonna be a witness? Whatever, we just need the votes of us, okay? Yeah, that's all that's needed.
I saw you sign it.
Yeah.
I know.
You saw that I signed it, okay. Okay.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, then moving on, the next item is the audit draft review.
I provided a copy of the draft audit in your packets along with a memo that describes the highlights of the audit. I don't know if anybody has any questions. I think the, the important factor in that is that we ended the budget with a $76,852 favorable variance. I was pleased about that, particularly having it be my first year.
Our first budget, yeah.
Yeah, it was a big, it was a big deal. We will also have unassigned funds amounts in the, in the amount of $325,621. We are, according to our auditor, allowed to continue to finish spending the facility's maintenance amounts, the $17,866 in this year.
What didn't get spent? What, what didn't we do?
We didn't finish some things in this building. We wanted to, we also wanted to address the safety and security of the treasurer's office. We're looking at maybe putting in some safety glass down there.
Well, that was never talked about during the last budget. But I mean, if that's something that we should look at, we can, but that wasn't part of the discussion.
The last year, we did Pridey Beach, the dock. We did some tours down municipal buildings, we did public works.
You did not, you did not paint the gateway, is that where this money is left over from?
We did not paint the gateway. The gateway ended up being a very high bid, that was over $20,000, $25,000.
Well, it still needs to be done.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
It's not gonna get cheaper.
No.
We need to address that.
Right.
Okay.
That's where that money, that's gonna be, that's gonna be where that money was left from then, because you didn't paint the gateway.
Well, there's almost enough to paint it right there.
Right, right.
So other than that, does it look okay to you?
Yeah, it's, it's a pretty heavy reading, I can tell you that.
If it looks, at this point, if it looks okay to you, I will sign my management letter and you will get the originals printed out.
I wonder what they mean by this is gonna be an austere year. That's got me a little concerned.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna stick to our budget, do our best to not over spend.
Absolutely, we are.
Okay.
You know, I had a couple of questions. First of all, I just wanted to make sure I got the figures for surplus funds correct?
Well, there's two different funds. One is that we had planned to spend quite a bit of money and fortunately ended up spending $76,852 less than we had planned to spend.
Okay, so this is a big disappointment for everyone, I get it.
I, I think that's...
No.
And the, the amount... And, um, the, the amount that, um, our auditor has found to contribute to the unassigned, which is basically the surplus, will total $325,621.
That's our total surplus.
That includes the $76,000?
Two separate funds. I asked that question too and it gets very complex. So the two things that, the elements that make up the $76,000 are that we did not spend as much as of our, um, budget that we had thought. The amount that goes into, um, the part that goes into the unassigned is more complex. There's things in there that don't necessarily touch the $76,000. And if you want more details, call me and I'll have my auditor on the phone so he can explain it in English.
Okay, I, I will. There, there's one other question I had, which is, are there any auditors' notes as part of this?
There will be. There's auditors' notes in every one and, um, uh, I think the one that we reference most closely is, uh, note number 17. And that describes how they came up with the $76,000 favorable variance. And, um, those will be published and available to the public. Yeah.
So can we equate unassigned funds to excessive funds or to, now what, what did we tap last year to balance the budget? We grabbed, what was that?
Unassigned, yeah.
Unassigned.
So that's, that's the, okay, we took $200,000 out of there too. So we got $325, yeah, I know. So we have $325, okay, awesome. Well, looks good.
And then I noticed.
It's not Coventry, but it's all right. Sorry, we don't have $10 million in the bank.
No, I know. Um, but I noticed you're having success with people with tax payments.
I was going to give an update under openness on where we are with the tax payments, which is like, the tax letters, uh, from our attorney will be mailed out to, um, our, uh, delinquent taxpayers tomorrow. So folks can expect a letter, both property and water and sewer.
How, how many properties are we talking?
Um, I can't tell you how many properties, but I can tell you that it totals about $80,000. It totals about $80,000 and property, it totals about $80,000 in water and sewer. So those letters are going out and folks can pay anytime throughout this process. So we encourage them to come in and pay in full or make a payment plan we've made that is sustainable. So I did wanna put that out.
A large, a large, well, I'm gonna say it's a large chunk of the, or a large number were people who had plans but then stopped making payments on their plan.
Couldn't sustain payments.
Or didn't contact you one way or the other.
Exactly, yeah. And the goal is to, you know, work with folks, get them to, to pay. We need to lower that amount.
And you sent letters before. You sent letters and tried to contact before too.
Yeah. So at this point, it's at stage one with the city attorney's office. We've been working on our, um, our spreadsheet for the past couple of days, getting it ready. Today was the 17th and interest gets attributed on the 15th of each month, so we took care of that and sending out fresh letters tomorrow. This one's stage one, probably attorney.
Okay. Any questions on the audit? Anything? No?
No.
Okay.
Well, it's good.
Okay. Now we would need to move on. Any new business? Did Mr. Dawson want you to bring anything up? Any documents?
No, I don't have any.
Nothing. Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I just have one that I'd like to throw it out here. 'Cause you think about it all summer, it's a so-called drought where it just in the verges. But there's one town that was on the news tonight. And Vermont here is going out now saying, let's start saving water. Let's not be washing cars, doing any of this stuff, 'cause the water levels are starting to get kind of low. And I'm kind of wondering how are our water supplied? Do we know?
I assume that I have not heard any, uh, concerns from anybody at, um, the water plant.
Yeah.
Um, I will check and I can put something on our website if there is something to be concerned about. I assume conserving water is always a good idea, whether we're, we're in drought conditions or not.
Well, we know we always wanna conserve water.
Mm-hmm.
But there are towns in Vermont now, according to Channel 3 News, are starting to go to their people and say, hey, let's start really getting serious.
You know, there was one town that said on the news tonight they're shutting water off.
At night? That's what I heard, they're shutting it off.
Jeffersonville or, yeah. Well, I can tell you,
We've only done it once here.
We're way down for the year, since I do it for the weather service. We're way down on precipitation for the year and this month, well, we're halfway and as I said, we, I've only measured .38 for the month.
About eight or 10 inches, right?
We're down by at least eight inches for the year, at least for here, from my records. And so it's very dry. But we've got, we've only ever had to, it was years ago, we had to go into, once.
We had to stop the watering of lawns and.
Right. And then that's when we were down to one pump at the time. We have two pumps now, but I'm, Tom, Tom will probably let you know.
I'll check and I'll post something on our website. And if the media wants to follow up with me, I'll make sure I have a good answer.
Plus, we didn't, we were short-changed about 45 inches of snow last winter too.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
As we thought was great, but if you pay in the.
Oh, yes. Any other new business?
No, that's all I had.
Jack?
No, I don't have anything.
Oh, all right. Uh, new business? No, thank you.
Old business? Mr. Wilson?
No.
Mr. Robichaud?
No.
I don't have any.
Just a brief update that 94 meters have been requested, the water meters, speaking of conserving water. And so far, 16 have been installed.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Good.
I think you're making good progress.
Okay. The next meeting date, we will have a public informational meeting regarding the ECDP planning grant application. That will be October 24, 2016 at 5:30 PM here in the council room. And then it'll be followed by a centennial planning committee meeting that same evening at 6:00 PM. And so that's the next meeting for that. Then the, um, there is a ribbon-cutting ceremony at Pride Fitness on Union Street, November 7th at 5:00 PM. And our next regular city council meeting is November 7th at 6:30 PM. And that's some of the dates coming up.
Mr. Mayor, if you go to 356 Union Street on November 7th, there will be nobody there.
Okay, then I was given the wrong date. What is the date?
No, you're giving the right day. You're giving the wrong address. I have no idea where 356 Union Street is.
356, well, that's what's right here.
What's your, what's your address?
326 Bluff Road.
I was gonna say, that's on the Bluff Road, aren't you?
326.
So it'll be, it'll be 356 Bluff Road.
Now, I know I've been late at some things, but I sure will go on the way to that.
Well, thank you. I'm glad you.
Well, I'm gonna see you folks later.
Okay. Very good. Thank you for the correction.
Why we're all there, huh?
Now we need a motion to go on executive session for public works negotiations.
So, vote second.
Motion made a second, and all those in favor?
Aye.